All right. Good evening, pleasure of the evening. Good evening again, the mayor is not here tonight, he is on Zoom but we Zoom is no longer official unless we pass a resolution or an ordinance which we I think intend to do within a couple of months to so the Zoom will be legitimate again. So I'm chairing the meeting in the mayor's stead. First up is review and approval of the of actually of two of the annual meeting. And well, should we take those separately?
You have the public hearing.
I'm sorry, what? Public hearing first?
That's what you have on the agenda anyways.
Right. Public hearing, so we'll defer and we'll go to the public hearing on on a restore New York grant application. And just by way of background, what is a restore New York grant program? And this is offered by the Empire State Development. It's the state's economic arm and it provides up to $2 million per project to transform abandoned and neglected properties. Essentially, there is a grant application in to help rehabilitate the Stone Hospital in Madison Barracks. And one of the elements of the grant application is to have a public hearing to make comments on our grant application, so I'll open it up for comments. And that includes folks on Zoom. Any comments? Anybody? Okay, hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Thank you, and now we'll get into review of the minutes. First we'll take the they're all one, should we do that? Should we break it up or is it okay to do both? Okay, the annual meeting and our regular meeting in December.
I'll make a motion to accept the regular end of the meeting.
Motion made by trustee Silva.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Townsend, any further discussion?
What was that presence like?
Will abstain, okay trustee Mildred abstains. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Thank you. And treasures report.
You've got my report in front of you. Nothing out of the ordinary here, you can see that the joint records and the whole purchasing. The ice cream got back and paying for insurance. So we've got some money around there and I have the sewer products highlighted down on the bottom. Because that bond was paid off in the bills here, saving the village, I believe it was fifty-four thousand.
Sixty-four thousand, fifty-four thousand dollars, thank you. So we we are just so you all know, we there's a bill to be paid for about $212,000 or something like that. And by being able to pay that off, now we saved $54,000. And that's due to, you know, how we allocate and 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 charge our water and sewer rates, so we have a good program in place, it's been in place for years and years. And we by having a program in place whereby we can put a little money away each each month. We're able to do a project like this and we can continue to do capital projects in this manner, so thanks very much.
Something I noticed, there's a question I probably ask every other month, Lori. There's a lawman bill in there for $327,000 and we talked about.
Thank you Shannon for keeping him in line.
Sorry.
Let's vote on the.
So I so I will entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
To accept the treasurer's report.
Motion made by trustee Silva.
I'll second that.
Seconded by trustee Mildred. Any discussion, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carried.
Now you can ask about that.
Now the bills.
So my question about the bill, so there's a bill we paid this past month and it's $327,000. We talked about this a couple of months ago, I just want to refresh my memory, usually for contract work like this you have a term of payment. Some upfront, maybe more if we complete with the checklist signed off, then maybe the rest. It seems like we're paying every month, should we expect we pay every month from this point forward until this project is complete?
Yes, typically how these are set up with the contract language is that there's monthly payments, so the contract set up the under Smiths payment application, we the engineer have 30 days to review or approve or not approve, and then we hand that to the village, you also have 30 days review or not approve. But typically in all these capital construction projects, they're monthly billings. And then we submit to the funding agency monthly as well for reimbursement for those.
And we say funny agency, that's the ready, the funds that we get reimbursed back from state.
Yeah, is it monthly because it's a ready project?
No, it's typically how they've all been structured before is is monthly. Now, we have had some projects where they're so quick that contractors will submit almost weekly or every two weeks at times. So funny, as you said, you can send us a request every week if you want to. But to try to be, you know, sometimes the contractor's going for two months, that's a lot of workers he's got out there to hold out, you know, two months payment for, so typically monthly is what I've always seen.
And you're doing a double check to make sure that at the end we're balancing out, right, that that's part of what your job is.
We've got a full time on site guy, so he's checking quantities off. Some are lump sum and some are unit price, so in every square foot of this and square foot of that, he's double checking.
Thank you Cory.
You did. I answered my question.
Great.
I asked it again in two months.
Thank you, motion to pay the bills?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Townsend. Seconded by trustee Silva, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, care, motion carried. Okay. Department reports, we'll start with the DPW, I think I saw Lynn, I think I saw him on there, but let's just see here, Lynn Martin, there he is. Let's just see if I can unmute the guy. Hang on a second.
There we go.
There we go Lynn.
Hi there.
Hey Lynn.
You do have my report there, I'd like to elaborate on a few few of the sections that I have pointed out there.
Absolutely.
One of the big ones is is two months ago, we had a contractor run over one of our light poles. And the village has since taken care of that, had it repaired and put back in place. And the bill is $436 and some odd cents. I have been in contact with the with a fellow, but he has made no conscious effort to pay for that bill. I would like to take that to the next level. It has been referred to John, he has documentation that the accident did happen. I don't know what we can do to actually retrieve this money, but I'd like to take the next step on it.
Okay. Mr. Gleason. You have you're are you the correct person to follow up on this?
Ah yeah, I documented it and I can get a hold of the subject directly and then we can look at whether it goes through the insurance or what exactly the next step is. I'll be in contact with Lynn more on that.
Okay, board, everybody okay with John making contact with the person, okay? Yep, thanks John, okay Lynn?
The next thing is, is I think I would like to do a big shout out to Vinnie and Matt from Northern Tree Company. We had an issue with the heavy snow that we we've encountered with a last snowstorm, actually the last two snowstorms. And because of that, our snow blower had broken down and they had maintained downtown sidewalks. They did a fantastic job and worked hand in hand with them as far as clearing the snow out of the way with them. I just wanted to say thank you and I I think that they should be commended for for their hard work and effort.
Well, we do appreciate that, yes.
And I think that's 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 probably all that I have to elaborate on at this point.
We appreciate your.
Any questions on my report?
I have a question.
Trustee Silva.
You have a number seven, 114 Dodge app, but you don't have any explanation, can you tell me more?
Yes, I'm sorry, I did I did want to go further in detail with that. Over the last month or so, I I have, you know, I spent time out in the village. And a few residents, probably probably six or so have questioned me on the the uncharacteristic looks of 114 Dodge in comparison to all the other residents that reside within the village and it's a it's a mess, it's a major thoroughfare into our village and it looks like looks like excuse my language hell over there. You know, further along this guy, if he needs help with something, I am more than willing to on my own time help this gentleman out.
Has the zoning officer been alerted?
I do, I believe so.
Mark, this is Alex on here, I don't know if you guys can hear me.
Yes.
Yeah, the I I've talked to Jim about this. He has sent voluntary letters of compliance to KJ. His main issue and then part of the reason and Jim may, his opinion may have changed over the last six months, but by and large, the the equipment that he's got in his driveway does turn over and move, he's moving it in and out of his basement, it's around, so Jim wasn't comfortable at the time when I spoke with him. Issuing a citation, but just trying to encourage him to help, I think I think both Officer Gleason and I have had a personal relationship or interactions with KJ to try and help him, he does tend to be receptive for a time. But I know that he also no longer really wants to talk to either me or Officer Gleason, so Lynn's suggestion might be a good one, if if someone else can reach out to him and offer him help in lieu of just issuing a ticket, I do know that and Jim is also aware that he's not in a position really to pay a ticket if he gets one, so I'm not sure that'll be effective at doing anything except you know, Jim and I talked about this, kind of making him angry and.
Okay, I think I think at this point, probably the rest of this dialogue should probably be more offline. So, thank you, thank Lynn, thank you for raising it and we will circle back with with the zoning officer as well. I think that'll be appropriate and then again offline, you guys can should have a discussion and figure out your next steps.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine, I just thought I'd bring it to your attention.
Thanks.
Mine so many times.
Yep, thank you. Any else Lynn?
I have nothing else unless you have something for me.
Any any trustee ever commented on DPW? Again, great job this for two two storms. And and it was quite a lot of snow too, so.
Thank you Mark, and thank you board.
Thank you.
Okay, police department, John. Officer in charge Gleason.
Yes, I submitted my report and dropped it in the drive there for you all to review. I have also had people flag me down about that property and I've referred them to the zoning office.
Thank you.
Or the zoning officer. As far as the report goes, was there any questions, we've had a few more animal complaints and citations have been issued accordingly for that.
Yeah, John did.
And it's
Go ahead.
I spoke to the court about what we talked about.
Yes.
So far, their understanding is, and they were talking to the judicial people, the higher ups to find out, but as far as they're aware, the mayor doesn't have standing to represent and neither does the police. They believe it's either going to be the village lawyer or possibly the DA's office, they're waiting for a final answer on that. And there, as soon as they give me that answer, I will let you know.
All right, thank you very much. What what John is referring to is, you know, we can issue tickets in the village, but any defendant coming to court, if the village isn't represented presumably by an attorney, that case gets thrown out. It's.
And that's for village, village ordinance.
For village.
Like regular, right, regular traffic tickets or criminal arrests are handled by the DA's office, but as far as ordinances that are specific to our local laws.
So is Jim? We would need him to attend court on those nights, is that what?
He would have to attend and what the court I know can do is to sort of you know, kind of collect and have on that particular Tuesday night docket. So we'll we'll continue to work on that, thanks for reaching out to the court on that, John.
Yes, and then also one other thing that I wanted to follow up on, I know Lynn has brought it up before and I do I do not keep track of what you have for ARPA funds or what you're awarded. But I know he had mentioned before about an idea about using some of the ARPA monies to compensate or show appreciation to village employees that were the frontline workers throughout the pandemic. I just wanted to bring that up again and let you know that it has been done locally, I know the village of West Carthage has done it. And I believe there's some other villages right here in our county. To just show like the DPW, the police and some of the office staff that responded to people's homes and got up close and personal with the public during the whole pandemic and face that uncertainty uncertainty of whether they would be exposed and in turn bring that home to their houses and their families. Um, I know West Carthage had given the full time employees like an appreciation of like $1,500 and the part time 750, there was some other localities that did it on an hour's work during the pandemic basis, you know, so much for each hour worked or but it was just another idea that I had wanted to like bring up there to back up Lynn. And what he was mentioning, but it's just something to make you aware of.
Thank you. Okay. All right, any questions for John? Okay, thanks John.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see who's next. Fire department.
Yeah, it's here from the fire department, but those is in the file.
You do have the fire departments reporting the file.
Yep.
Just want to highlight calls 13 fire, 23 EMS, that seems to be a trend from month to month.
Yeah, I have end of year.
End of year is even more impressive.
Yeah.
What was in the year, I'm sorry.
It's in my report, it was like more than double.
Okay.
So.
It's important to know.
It is. callbacks? Like two times one night? Uh, that part I don't know, yeah, I mean, I will say, speaking on behalf of the fire department, we had a frequent flyer this weekend that they had four calls in the same day to the same resident. So those are a call every time, but legally they do have to respond to them, so we don't really have a choice, so.
Do mutual aid calls count in their totals?
Yeah, yes, and they usually put them in the report as a mutual aid. Thankfully, we haven't had any big fires where they've had to go to a mutual aid recently, that's not going to be needed, but usually they do report on those too.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. We used the boat yet?
The boat is out of water. Okay, any further questions of fire department, if not, let's go to Heritage area and visitor center Kathy and Dave.
Um, yeah, my I submitted my report to the last minute, but it wasn't there. I guess the big news is the village was awarded the grant, the LWRP program, that was about $670,000 and that's due for the overages for the ready project.
Right.
Realize it doesn't make up all of the overages.
The current projects or projects in the past?
We're going to be short on it, was that to cover those shortages?
Yeah.
Good, very good.
So we don't have to de-scope what we were talking about.
No, we don't.
No.
Because we were only going to be short like 300,000, so this is going to help cover all of that.
Yeah, this is for the current project during construction and the ones that we're going to bid out to your.
Well, first of all, we were, we Cory and I were on a call with the LWRP person, we have talked to her every two weeks about the ready projects and she is the one that would have, one of the ones that would have used it, but anyway, she said we were the only community in North Country to get an LWRP award this round, which is.
Very good. And you wrote that. And and I know you have a lot of help from burning car, so thank you, thanks.
I know. That grant is 7525, so the reason we didn't get 100% of what we asked for was because we couldn't, we only get 75%.
Okay.
But we did get all of the all of the costs, the whole setting, we got 75% of all of it, of everything that we have.
Okay.
That's great.
Thanks, Mayor, did you have a point? Alex?
Nope, I was just going to say that the when Kelly was saying we were only over by 300, I think Cory, that was just for the two projects we already bid, so hopefully this will this is projected to to encompass the future likely increases in costs on the yet to bid projects too, I believe.
Yep, that is correct, yep, terrific, thank you.
And we are working on future projects or project concept, future grants, so the grants that will be coming up this next year and hope to have those to you, to the board. Hopefully by the March meeting, the grants typically aren't due until summertime July, but we're trying to get a little bit.
That will be, that actually is helpful as we are will be in the last part of our doing the budget and so we'd like to have that as as background information.
Yeah, we can get that.
That's good. Thanks.
One of those grants potentially maybe to stand the trail, we've been starting to pop the property.
Yeah.
We don't want to get into detail yet because it's some kind of property they're likely to play that's that's based on.
Thank you very much.
Turn on the webpage, it's not finished yet, let's put on it.
Visitor, visitor center.
Yeah, we had, we're still though this season, we had 136 people at that giggle time, without being able to hold it that night. I submitted my report, just a couple of highlights from it. We're still putting more, we're adding more events to our events calendar and we'll also be working on rewriting the history pages. Because it looks like those were never really fully developed after the website was first made, so we're working on that.
Good.
This month and probably next as well. Social media, we were, I applied and we were accepted into a set from a living, a very specific Facebook group.
Can track Benny now, right?
Oh no, he's been banned from that.
Just while you're on that topic, then I'm going to move off of it. We began to use Saks Harbor Visit for our emergency notifications because we don't have a village official Facebook page. And I did notice when I, we had maybe put three up there. But I was actually pleasantly surprised that people really responded, so I thought it was just touring, but actually yeah, that's good, actually it I also unfortunately got all notifications all the time that I that these people weren't looking. So thank you again.
Um, so this is sort of our penultimate, second last call for banner applications next month. That meeting will be kind of last month because the deadline is March 1st. So if anybody would like a banner run for the 2023 and 2024 seasons, now is the time to get your application in.
Okay, March 1st is the deadline, okay.
That's the hometown hero.
Yes, that's right. Daryl and I are working on the visitor guide incorporating the chamber. Trying to build content for them, you can also then use on our website, so it's sort of mutually beneficial. So we're working on writing up descriptions of the most attractions. And a new history section, which we'll use for the history of age club. Some after renovation, the exact, it's another important contact details. And then the other thing we're working on the off season is the PBS video, the introduction video that we show in the visitor center.
Right.
Right now, we found, met with PBS, we're now tracking down all the fortunes and the maths and everything that we show in that, trying to find those things are something acceptable to replace them, so that PBS can get footage of this.
Terrific. Questions for Kathy? Okay, thank you Kathy. Village engineer Brandon and Cory from burning car.
Yep, well, you didn't even say it. So congratulations to the village on the LWRP grant and data, it's hard work. Again, 676,000 and a little over 125,000, that is the natural portion. So kind of a little bit on the market for part of projects, Laman's payment record was received and it's been approved. And the project schedule was included in the back and we sent you everything seems to be going well and Laman plans on working as much as they can, weather permitting. So sheep eyelids installation continues on Marcus for art. They're expected to be completed next week. With high backs and dead man installation, so you'll see a lot more excavation when they start installing those. I believe tomorrow is expected to mobilize to the Chape and Alley project. So she pile probably tomorrow or later this.
Yeah.
And pending is expected, so they'll be drilling the pins in front of the sheep aisle wall at Marcus for part this week towards the end of the week as well, so probably or loud noises drilling things like that. So one thing that came up last week was when they were going to, starting to excavate the for the tiebacks, they started removing portions of the existing sidewalk that they found large gaps underneath underneath the sidewalk. Unfortunately, that can't build on top of that, so.
Did you guys happen to see that in the folder? Couple of pictures.
Oh, no, I did not see the pictures.
Was that what was underneath the extra sidewalk that was on top of it? Okay, so that's when we had all that water issue, they put concrete or a sidewalk on top of it, so when they removed that, this is.
That's long and short.
I'm on the wrong side, gotcha.
Here's being on the sidewalk, there was a good three foot void under that concrete that no one knew.
Al Capone wasn't there? Okay.
So the plan is is to remove all the damaged material and place so.
Yeah, I was just going to say, so that is an additional cost that we hadn't shown. One good thing about it though, with the FEMA grants, so actually home insecurity is going to be coming around Thursday. And being where designated as a large project, they will pay for cost overruns. And one of the things that they were paying for is the side of the new side.
Okay.
The demo, so as long as we document it, we should be able to the additional fill and time required to remove all that sidewalk, hopefully you should be reimbursed by FEMA.
Okay, that's great to hear.
So, yeah, so Chape and Alley, they're expecting to mobilize next week. Kind of looking at some existing conditions, we may need to revise the elevation of the sheep aisle just to make allow for adjacent elevations and structures, we don't want to make it too high and then cause issues with the the adjacent neighbors, so I think something may change slightly with that. And Lynn to kind of review that, so. Yeah, and the village kind of continues to help out Laman when they need certain things, like, you know, certainly very helpful and kind of to and helping out, so. Yeah, and the village kind of continues to help out Lamont when they need certain things, uh, like, you know, certainly very helpful and kind of to, to, and helping out, so.
Okay.
Uh, projects, middles, um, we've got some bricks that are some, uh, bricks in the middle and the stepstone papers, those are coming in. Uh, we sign that out, just for review with, in confirmation and materials share that with the village, so. Um, and then, uh, the remaining ready projects, trying to get those out for bid first quarter of each year, um, still working on those. Um, one important thing that we learned at the end of the year is, uh, we got, we received the notice of the application for the, for the Hamilton Street permit, so. That's a step in the right direction with, uh.
Oh, good.
For Hamilton Street, so. I guess that's kind of all that I have for the ready projects and findings.
Brandon, do you have artist renderings for Chapelet Alley or Hamilton Street?
Um, we don't, we have some preliminary plans, um. So Chapelet Alley, there's not much there as far as aesthetics, it's more just a sheep pile wall, I mean, we could provide you with some plans or if that's what you're looking for.
No, I, I was just curious, cause I hadn't, um.
Okay.
I hadn't been aware that that was even a, you know, project and.
Oh, Chapelet Alley?
Right, okay, I'm just kind of wondering what that, was that's gonna look like?
Yeah, yeah, certainly, you can, uh, listen. Drawings, drawings, yeah.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, other questions?
I could touch, I just on the other.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ready projects, um, we had, uh, funds remaining, um, they were hoping to the pump station or the building over the pump station. Um, I'm working on a budget and I'm gonna be sending this week, um, I think they actually have a meeting either Thursday, maybe Friday anyways. Um, so they take a look at that, but you know, budget wise, been working with Lynn on it, um. Trying to get away from having the building be an explosion group, um, so I just try not to view or certain parts of the pump station. So we'll, we'll see what they think, we'll be sending a budget on that.
Okay.
Um, the water intake, we, uh, continue to work on the design, actually we're coming, um, next week, uh, give old Lynn if he's available on Tuesday next week, but, uh.
Tuesday of next week, Lynn?
Uh, just doing some, uh, pump analysis real quick, make sure we've got everything straightened out on that, um. And then I think later on, the, uh, the INI study that you have, the, uh, twenty thousand dollar grants for the twenty-five thousand dollar study, um, some resolutions, I think I've just got ready for that, just to see that, so we can check and look forward to getting that, so, in place.
Other, any other questions, engineers?
Make sure you're helped.
I. Uh, quick.
That was all day.
I should have, I, I don't think Lynn's on anymore, but I should have brought this up, uh, there, uh, there is a water leak, uh, in Madison Barracks. It's been fixed and, um, I think, I think Lamont as part of their year guarantee that we talked about, oh, there's Lynn.
Yeah.
I'm here, I'm sorry, you, uh, my screen went, uh.
That's okay, look, why does, I, I'll give you the opportunity, just give you a brief, brief update on the water main leak in Madison Barracks.
Uh, yeah, it was a two inch service to one of the large buildings down there that gave way, um, it was, uh, actually when they were doing, uh, storm, stormwater, uh. Uh, construction this, this year, they ran into that and they repaired it, the repair had actually failed. And, uh, so they actually, they actually dug it up and, uh, repaired it, uh, actually correctly this time. So hopefully there's no further, no, no further issues, but.
Great, yeah, thank you, interesting, it could be a fortuitous water break if they repaired it correctly, so terrific, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Uh, I have a village historian, but I believe Connie, you're giving a report in February, is that correct?
Uh, no, actually I turned it in, so you should have the six month report.
Oh, we do, thank you.
At this point, and I just wanted to, uh, highlight one of the things on that report, which I thought was, was pretty impressive. The, uh, Elijah Camp collection that had been saved, uh, from the auction, uh, two years ago and is now at Cornell University. Uh, they are working on organizing that to add it to the other Elijah Camp collection there, which will be pretty massive when it's, uh, completed and, and great for research projects. But one of the things that's, uh, a product that's already come out of that this past summer, the, uh, archivist who helped on that. Uh, spent his own time and his own money to have a booklet created, uh, some of the highlight pieces from that collection and the, um. Uh, presentation of the booklet was done this summer at the library's book fair, so, so that was, um, I think quite nice for our community.
Very good.
And then I wanted to comment on a couple of events, uh, an event that just took place that the State of the World site sponsored with New York State Parks was the January first, first day hike. Uh, this was our twelfth year of doing the first day hikes and, um, again, we had really good attendance, we had a hundred people. Uh, give or take, last year we had a hundred and thirty people, uh, the weather wasn't quite as good this year, plus we had a lot of, uh, residual snowbanks and snowdrifts on the, on the trail. But I think a hundred and thirty last year, a hundred this year coming out, uh, this is really a strong program and especially in the off-season. In the middle of the winter, so I think that's also very positive. Um, and then just kind of an update, uh, we were supposed to be hosting the North American War of eighteen twelve Grand Tactical in, uh, twenty twenty. We had hosted it in twenty-ten, it was coming back in twenty-twenty, it's been delayed, of course, uh, we are delaying it again another year this year. Uh, because next year in twenty-twenty-four is going to be New York State Parks one hundredth anniversary. So Parks is looking for some, um, some key feature events, uh, across the state. And, uh, so we've conferred with our Canadian partners and, uh, looking at July of twenty-twenty-four. And linking that into the New York State Parks one hundredth anniversary, hopefully a real signature event which we can have in Sagittar Harbor.
Very good, thanks, that's.
You're welcome.
Good news.
Yeah.
Great report too. Okay. Questions of Connie? Great, okay, um, Village Clerk.
I have a couple things for you, there is in your packet, the information on the remote access meetings, you, um, establish the local law. To replace the state permission to, to have meetings on too.
Correct, you're right.
So, um, if you will, if you want to, uh, proceed with that, I will contact, um, the lawyers and give the go-time, and you will. Um, send him a, or put in the notes.
This is, uh, you see this is, uh, from Kendall Walton and Burrows, January sixth letter, okay? And after the letter, you see a draft resolution. Uh, so if it's the board's pleasure to continue to hold meetings, uh, via, um, Zoom and other platforms. Um, I would entertain a motion to move forward with this initiative and then we'll work on getting, uh, our language. Uh, and then holding a public hearing and then passing, uh, this, this resolution, correct?
I'll make the motion to, uh, move forward with the video conferencing. Law.
Motion by trustee Silva.
I have it, right?
Okay.
Just planning, we still gotta take a look at what it says and discuss really.
This is kind of move forward so that we can talk to the attorney.
Okay, right.
So that's what we'll do, and then we'll do a public hearing, yeah, so we'll have time.
Right, right, yes, let's move forward with, yeah.
Motion by trustee Silva to move forward.
Second.
Second by trustee Mildred. Uh, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I am.
Close, motion carrying.
I also need to report that, um, the fire department now has, has, um, has.
Thanks to Shannon. Yes, thank to Shannon for giving up your son, like to take care of that.
Um, the office staff also would like to request that the office follow the second floor of the school district's closures due to the climate weather. Um, or for permission to do that.
And, uh, right now, there's been some discussion, uh, about that and, um, uh. I guess I'll open it up to, uh, trustees for just a couple of minutes, uh, for comments.
I think you said that best, right, your explanation of it made a lot more sense than mine, so if you don't mind sharing.
No, our school board.
Was much more clear than the way I was explaining it, so.
Okay, um. Well, I, I, I think, um. Generally, um, the, the school district or any school district has to consider a lot of things in its decision-making that. Wouldn't necessarily pertain to the, to the village, um, you know, they have multiple buses that are on the road, um, very early in the morning and they're, um. You know, making potentially hundreds of stops, not necessarily this district, but, you know, a district. Uh, in general would be making hundreds of stops and. Rural, remote location, so, um, you know, those are the types of things that a, a school district would, would have to consider that we necessarily wouldn't have to. So I, you know, my feeling is that, um, you know, we leave that decision to the discretion of the mayor, uh, we certainly don't want any. Employees on the road in, in poor weather conditions, but, you know, I, I don't think that a, a school closure should automatically trigger closure of village offices, I, I. Um, but, again, I think that. Um, the way we have been doing it has, has seemed to, you know, work well with, um. You know, with the mayor having the discretion to say, yeah, it's, it's bad, we're not gonna, not gonna put our employees on the road, but.
And to be backing off from what he said too, I also reached out to the town supervisor to see, you know, do they close and what is their policy on it, and they never close. Um, and they, um, you know, if Brenda is not feeling that, that she can't get out there, they'll actually send a truck after her, so. Um, I would agree with Greg that we, our circumstances are somewhat different, so.
Yeah, I think the, the only thing for me as a counterpoint, um, I, I'm fine just doing it ad hoc, that's what we've been doing, but it is. Um, it would be nice for the community to know easier, and so what I thought was nice about it is if the default is. If there's a weather-related school closure, not a delay, and not because they didn't use up their snow days, it, it would be nice so that residents know. That gives us like a standard procedure that people get used to over time, so that people aren't coming in unnecessarily on those days when we have decided to close, but. Not everybody has Facebook, not everybody's gonna know necessarily.
Procedure to, to call like channel seven, so it scrolls like everybody else does, or do we not do that?
They're easy to do.
Right, but I just wanted, do we already do that?
Yeah, there's other, you know, it, it's, it's fine to, to not do it, I, I, my guess is we don't get a ton of people coming on inclement weather days in the first place, um. But, you know, that, that was why I was in, in favor of it, but if, if the rest of the board doesn't wanna do it, then obviously.
I feel, I think, uh, that it sounds to me like the, most of the boards feels that on a case-by-case basis, um, uh, a lot of times.
It doesn't have to be ad hoc, like you said, Mary, you know, just like the school, they have a set of criteria that would trigger a school closure, we can develop the same kind of criteria for the village offices as well. We just need to put that into running somewhere, this is what would trigger a potential closure.
Right, something like a travel ban that we had over that Christmas week, when there's a travel ban, then I would say, yeah, the office is closed, no one should be on the road, but. I, I would agree with having some sort of criteria to decide, you know, not just, oh, it's a lot of snow, the school's closed, so we're gonna close the office, I would like to have something a little bit more.
So I think, I think, sounds, sounds like offline, we can come up with a set of criteria.
It's just to be clear, I mean, we, we have, you know, it, it's Brendan, then everyone has been, you know, exactly at eight.
Right.
And we, the rules at two, two fifteen, one has been knowing that it's snowing, yes, of course, we have, you have to do what makes sense, right?
Yep.
Right, we don't want people driving so that they're safe. Right, oh, I know, I didn't mean to.
You know. No, but I mean, it, it hasn't been closed.
Yeah, and I, I think that, you know, the, if you look at the way school districts operate, you know, oftentimes you'll see a one-hour delay or a two-hour delay because. It's, it's simply a matter of getting the roads cleared, so I think we build the same kind of flexibility, you know, something for, for our employees too. We can look at it, yeah.
We'll take a look at it offline and, um, by February meeting, we'll have some criteria to discuss, okay?
Great.
Yeah.
Um, all right, and finally, and I didn't have this on the agenda, but planning board, since I see Janet here and.
But if my report is.
You did?
Yep, it's in.
Little summary of how many review. A little bit more than last year, but not so few. And then, uh, I thought I would add a couple of things that are still on, on, on my mind and I think on the school board, you asked them. Um, about the Madison Barracks review that was completed, and a few things, and I haven't checked in the story about this, but. And it came up in that conversation about the water lines, that there were some references with what would normally put in the ground. Uh, in contrast with what was issued as the as-built drawings, and I don't think that's a good way to leave it. Uh, as homes put all in there and if other problems occur, and we've gone through this previously, so it's, you know, and it's gonna be easily remedied if. The village board asks for that, but if the village board doesn't ask for it, then you have an infrastructure agreement and a drawing that probably doesn't really align with what's actually in the ground. And that's generally not good. And then there was one other thing, and I mentioned it before, the last minute in reviewing the infrastructure agreement, I saw, which had already been signed. Um, that it incorrectly states the description of the subdivision blocks and omits Mike Campbell. But instead refers to the fifteenth block as the utility access for that rule. And, um, so if infrastructure agreement was amended to include a reference to a new as-built drawing. Then it would be sensible to include a, a change in the subdivision description, because as it is now, it doesn't reflect what it really is with the. Not a big deal, but, you know, these are legal documents that we've signed, represent lots of money. And hopefully you never have to pursue getting any of that financial guarantee, but if you do, then you would hope everything would be properly defined and. Label them in your best interest.
Uh.
Put that up as is another reminder at the end of the year.
We, uh, actually are, uh, trying to, uh, book a meeting with, uh, Mike Campbell and I'm thinking that we, i- it's, part of it is to address some of this. So I may, um, I may get with you to be part of that, okay, so we, we wanna actually kind of. Address some of those and there are a couple of things that are coming up that, um, that he's indicated he'd like to a- address. Because Mike Campbell's gonna be moving on, I think, at some point, right, so.
And that second one was, I'm sure, oversight, lawyer to lawyer.
Yes.
Not knowing.
I believe that.
That, well, it must be this, uh, but the first one clearly is not an open.
Correct.
And then the, uh, other issue is that, what I mentioned last month, the temporary structures for uses and, uh. I'm requesting that we get maybe together to look at the zoning laws to see where it could be improved to provide or lethal, uh, means to. Consider such as like the temporary seasonal vestibule added on to protect an indoor area of movement or wind. But make sure it complies with the intent of our district regulation, make it very clear, that sort of thing, which is not clear right now. Make it very clear, that sort of thing, which is not clear right now.
Uh, Dave, you, you pull that committee together.
Yeah.
That's the second request we've had to do that.
Yep. Okay. Any questions on Janet?
Okay. With something for all the department heads, this is a friendly reminder, we're getting ready to handle budget season. And remember how we do budget now, you guys are gonna start us off with our first session, you're gonna come present your proposed budgets or your request. To the board, so we can build that, bake that into our budget for 2022. So start putting together your budgets for 2022.
They're not scheduled yet, but they're starting in February. I'm, I'm gonna, I'll get to that in a, in a minute, actually, but. Trustee reports, starting with Mayor Morgen.
Thanks, Mark. I've got a short one this month and both points are kind of already been, well, one's already been brought up and one's coming up shortly, so I'll be quick, but. The situation with the, the dogs, dog complaints, I did talk to Officer Gleason and. Joe Plummer at the county level, just to see if we had any, you know, if, if there is a repeated offense. What are our escalation options? And, and I was surprised to learn, we really don't have any. So the, the hope is that after issuing some tickets right now, none of the tickets have actually gone to court yet. Hopefully, once that gets through, we'll get a little bit more. Serious compliance from the repeated offenders, but I was surprised to know that we kind of are stuck in a holding pattern until that happens. And then the other point I had was about the Stone Hospital, which I think is coming up in new business, so I'll wait for that.
Okay. And in terms of my report, as, as Ron started, budget process is upon us. All departments and community groups have been mailed. The, essentially the budget outline to talk about. You know, what you're, what, what went well this year, what worked, what, you know, did you accomplish your goals? What are your goals for the next fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four, and what your budget request is? So. I think they're due by the end of this month and then we'll begin to work that budget scheduling for February. So we'll have a number of work sessions like we did last year, probably not. As many. And this Friday, I'm working with the treasurer to construct a draft budget so that we'll have something to work off of. Okay. Also, in terms of strategic planning, we talked about this and the mayor did offer a date up, but I think. Everybody seemed to be okay with that. I, and so it's going to be scheduled and will, it'll be a work session, public work session. But it's a strategic planning session for the, for the board on January twenty-first, about eight thirty in the morning. And hopefully we'll get done by before noon. I put together a draft. Agenda for that day, and I think we'll be able to get through it, but it'll give the board of trustees a direction for twenty-three, twenty-four. And that's all I have right now. Trustee Mildred.
Short report this month, we'll start with the partner directly. I wanna say thank you to Max Mason and those who helped, and as you guys have seen, there's a beautiful skating, a skating rink out there. For a swimming pool, right now it's a swimming pool, but soon it will.
It's gotta be frozen.
Okay, I put that together, they ordered it, it's ready to go. So, uh. Mayor, we finally got you an ice skating rink. You've been asking for it for about a year and a half now.
I'll be on it soon.
The other thing is, uh, the park and rec committee or the rec committee is still in talks with the, uh, even though the Y has left, uh, Seca Harbor. They still wanna support us with the summer program. So between the YMCA, the school and the Seca Harbor Rec Committee, we're working on a program for the summer as well. LDC from the LDC side of things, no meeting this month. Mayor Mike Holland came in. He would like for the board and the village board and the LDC board to schedule some time in the future. So we can talk about what we wanna do with the LDC property, since we are mutual benefactors of that property, you've gotta kind of develop a way forward, okay? So he would like for our board and the LDC board to get together at some point in the future to discuss what we're gonna do with that property.
Sounds good. Be, be an evening meeting, again, public.
Yeah, hey, on Ron, while you're, while you're talking about LDC real quick, the, the Restore New York project. It would be great if we could get a lot of support from the LDC as well before that application is due. I just don't wanna forget to bring that up when we talk about the.
Oh, good, thanks, yeah.
Better, okay, got it. That's all I have, pending your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ron. Trustee Silver.
Um, my report is relatively short as well. The fire department did not have a January meeting. It was Campbell's, um, Gino High Members, I believe, were still. And or not anyhow. They did provide with end of year number reports, which we keep talking about their monthly reports. End of year reported that they had a hundred and fifty-five fire calls for the year. They had two hundred and seventy-seven EMS calls, so. That's quite significant. And I know it's been mentioned earlier, they did have their internet out for well over a month that really significantly impacted. Their ability to do reporting, their I am responding software was useless. They couldn't use it at all. And that's really, we need to make sure that if we do something here with our wifi, that we don't knock them off because. They didn't even realize it had anything to do with what we did here at the office. So just keeping that in mind, it is working now. Again, thanks to Shannon. That's all I have on the fire department, because we're gonna talk about that other issue later. I do, just to piggyback off of the Department of Public Works, the DPW, I personally just wanna thank the DPW. I know Lynn mentioned it. But they worked that entire weekend of Christmas, and I don't know if people realize how many hours of overtime they worked from that Friday. Until that Monday, they worked a hundred hours of overtime. They did not have Christmas with their families at all, while we all sat home and were safe and cons, you know. I just wanna publicly thank them. The three of them did a fantastic job. They did go above and beyond. There was an ambulance call to my mother-in-law. House and Mikey drove. The, he piled the, the ambulance all the way to their house, because the ambulance could not get there. So that's above and beyond. Like, they really did a great job and I just, I just wanna say that again. I just, I, I think we owe them a public thank you for that. Again, they didn't get Christmas like the rest of us. I did also have a comment about the Nikon conference, but I think was talking with Shannon. I'm gonna put off going to the Albany conference and look at the one that's at Turning Stone. I really, they do have a conference that's talking about. The future of the fire service, and I know we've had a lot of conversations, a lot of things going on with. What's the future of the fire and the ambulance service gonna look like? I think it's important for one of us. To attend that. I don't care if it's at Turning Stone or Albany, but just to kind of be in the know to see where are they going with it, what do they think's happening and how are they gonna help us? Keep it where it needs to be. So I'm willing to do that, but I think Turning Stone will be a better, easier drive. So I'm gonna go to that one. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you. And trustee Townsend.
Yeah, mine is brief as well. I did reach out to. A number of community organizations and. Provided my contact information. I, I did attend the, the library monthly meeting and there are a number of. Other organizations with upcoming meetings that I'm planning to attend in February and March, so.
Did, did you reach out to anybody at Can-Am?
I have not.
We were just talking about that in the office and just wondering where the status is. I would like to get a Can-Am status. So if anybody's out there knows one of the chairs, let's plan, if the trustees, it's Brenda in.
She just agreed to, I think she's relatively new to the committee.
Right.
And she, you know, she's gonna need a lot of help and guidance.
And, and that's fine, I'm sure. I've been on it for twenty years myself. I would, it would be great to, it'd be great to have a report, you know, just an update and.
Mark, I have a call with Brenda in, in a couple of days and.
Okay, good.
I'll let her know and I think she's planning on starting the meeting process pretty soon and putting the, the, like, the committee together.
Perfect, that's good to hear.
I'll, I'll update you once I chat with her and, and she can sync up with you too.
Great. It seems far off, but it's right around the corner when you're talking about a two-day event, yeah, so, thank you. Okay, old business. I think we did cover dogs and leash law issues. John gave, you know, his report. And, and talked about what the court is, you know, is aware of, and so we'll, we'll get more information on that. And when we.
With writing, because we were rewriting that and we're.
Right.
Two, maybe three months into getting language back, I believe. To fix, because right now we don't have a leash law. We have something.
Mayor, you were, you were gonna. Control ordinance, yeah, it's, um, we're just waiting on Jim Burrows. I'll, I'll ping them again. I, I think they probably just had it fall off their radar, but. It might already be done, or if they're not, they can have it done by next month, I'm sure.
All right, so we're gonna target, we'll target, uh, uh, next month as. Actually hoping that we get information prior to next month's board meeting to review, and then we could actually maybe pass a resolution to get.
Do we need a public hearing?
An amendment. Yeah, that'll have to be the start of the thirty day.
The language, then do a public hearing, so the public hearing wouldn't be until March.
But we're after the public hearing, you can pass.
Oh, okay.
Yes, you know, we've got the thirty days, so if we, if we aim to have the language in place to start the thirty day. Well, hearing next month, then we can pass it in March.
Correct, good, okay.
And if, can I, can I just interject?
You can, John.
And will, will the lawyer that's writing that, will he have an idea of whether it will be their office or our counsel or. The mayor, who will have this footing to respond in court?
I don't, I think this is an amendment to our existing leash law and not addressing that part. That's more administrative, I believe. I'm not sure that's. I'm not sure that's necessary in there, but, so that'll be internal, but I, I think we just need something a little bit different than what we have today. You know, yeah, so in terms of what, what leash, what control, all of that, right? Okay.
Right, and also just to elaborate on what, uh, the mayor was talking about earlier. The, uh, what happens is the people are given a ticket. And then once they go to court, if they are convicted of that, then there's a set fine right now of fifty dollars. And then for each additional conviction after that, it bumps it up to a hundred dollars if it's another conviction within sixty months. And then after that, it goes up again. That's the different levels for the repeat offenders. So it is a long process before they get to that. I just wanted to put that out there about, he mentioned it earlier.
Okay. That, the, that part we can take into consideration when we do amend the leash law. Okay. All right, any other on dog, uh, control issues? Okay, great. IT services for the village. We know we've been working on this for a long, long time and we have multiple issues. We don't have internet at the. Visitor center, we have internet issues in this building still, and we've added, we can add to that. You know, we've got video that we really need both inside here to project meetings as well as outside. We have cameras right now, just so you know. And our cameras looking at you if you're out there skating or pretending to skate. So, but they're just little cameras. It's not a full system, you know, I'm, uh, full security system is, is, is a little different. It's a little more coordinated and. You know, with the amount of people that I see, because I live across the street, come into the back of this building at all hours of the, of the day and night. For no reason, because I've walked back here. We have to have better eyes on this building, with a better eyes on a visitor center and other points in the village. So this is a big, big issue, and I think it's bigger than any individual on the board. I know the mayor's been working on this, but I think it really has grown to be an issue beyond, and I think we need to invest. I think the board has probably heard enough and talked enough about it. And I, we are thinking that we should entertain discussion with one of our large IT. Service providers such as Northern New York Computers or Computer, the Computer Services or Doyle or any of the, the biggies out there.
ABS came.
ABS is another one.
And that one included a maintenance contract, so I feel like we need the whole shebang. And I feel, you know, maybe that's something we can use some market funds for that is sitting there.
Yeah, and you know, you know, that is a good use of our funds.
And that smart tech grant also applies for.
Oh, thank you. That's smart. Yeah, thanks.
We, we got plenty of money. It's, it's really been an issue of the. The, the more competent, I think, IT companies are so busy that they're hard to get pinned down. So I do have Doyle coming out the week of the twenty-third. Hopefully we can get a proposal from them. If anybody wants to try and pick up proposals from any other companies that they've worked with, that'd be great. I'm, I'm not, as much as I'm happy to try and do it myself, I'm not trying to block us having a service provider. I've just not been getting good luck getting them to come and actually. Get up on site.
So what we need to do, I think, that's good to know about Doyle, but we need some specs so we can do apples to apples on this, right? So perhaps offline between now and the twenty-third, we can maybe work with Shannon, because you had been somewhat involved in. And the mayor, I'd be willing to help out. We need to drop some specs so we can go to each of these companies and say, here's what we need in full, in total. And get their, A, their, you know, what they would cost plus a timeline, right? So that, and, and Mayor, I think your point's well taken that they get busy and if they tell you six to ten months from now, well, that's. No can do. We really need this to begin now, right? So.
And then out of the town, had ABS, that's what redo everything out there. We just went through that exercise and went with ABS again.
Okay, good to know. So we, I, I agree that ABS and, so I think, I think the three that we probably end up doing is Doyle, ABS and. And maybe Northern New York Computers. They're, they're all around, they've been around for twenty-something years.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we'll work on those specs offline and, and, and get ready for that.
Let's not, let's not drag this out, okay?
No, we're doing it now. Twenty-third is the first one and we'll, we'll get successive quotes. Bring them back to February meeting and, and we're gonna go.
We've had a quote from ABS. It's been sitting in the office for two months. At least that long.
A quote probably not valid.
Yeah, it's probably, probably gone. Plus, we wanna, wanna make sure we have full specs, so it might change anyway, but we wouldn't do that.
Or would that was just for here? But we do need to have them updated.
Okay, great. We're gonna, we're gonna have in front of you, hopefully in February, board meeting, we're gonna have three quotes from three companies, but a full. A full IT service. Thank you. Uh, new business, we took care of open meeting, Restore New York. So Mayor, you have comments on Restore New York?
I'm gonna let the, the applicant start and, and I can jump in, but I just wanted to bring up that I, I think it's a. Really exciting project and I know there's a lot of. You know, our buddy Jay's not here today, I don't think, but he'll be excited to have it done as well.
Okay, applicants for Restore New York, which is technically the village, but. You guys are kinda carrying the ball.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Brendan Benlight, live on Bray Road. So we're looking to renovate the Stone Hospital, Madison Barrett, you're all familiar with it. So it's been vacant for some time now. We're looking to use Restore New York, just a reimbursable grant for New York State. Tickets money for renovation and rehabilitation to bring the property back into partial use. Kind of moved from the state that it's been for quite some time now. So there's no real risk to the village. There's no oversight that's required. No taxpayer dollars. The village is technically the applicant, but we as the project managers would manage all of the scope of work, et cetera. And then when the project was completed, the state would write the village a check and that would just be reimbursed back to us.
Trustee questions, go ahead.
Who, who do you, you work, you work the state, is that my understanding?
No, it's just a resident.
You're just a resident?
We're just residents.
Just residency, you know, being one here. I wanna say to Billy, are you working with Jake Johnson this at all or you've talked to him or?
We are, we're working with him and, and Dave to figure out. You know, how to transfer the labor to us and how to restore the building based on all the regulations.
So the good news is we are, Heritage Area is hooked in. The village is the municipality applying for Restore New York. These folks willing to step up. Obviously, the, the building. Uh, obviously, the, the building is in, uh, uh, the sale of the building is, is. Um, somewhere in court, waiting for Judge McCluskey to, uh, uh, allow it to happen. Uh, and, uh. It's a, it's a great thing, and this, these are what these funds are for, right? So, um, it just takes. As, as Dave will say, in all of the meetings we had. A year ago, he would say, look, this is great to apply for, you know, D R I, New York Forward, but we need. Applicants, private applicants to develop projects, right? The, and so this is one, right? Dave, you have any comments?
No, I mean, we're really supportive and, and working with that, with the, and, but, um, the other thing is, just so the board knows, um, the Restore New York grant was used. With, I think Lawler, Law, um, to restore the headquarters building that.
Yes, right, right.
So the village did that, used that, this grant to help Lawler restore that building.
Is, is there, um, I don't know if you know, Dave, but. Uh, the, the Restore New York grants capped at two million, so. Let's, let's assume that we got two million. Does that complete the necessary work? Or is that?
So I actually just got the numbers back today from contractors. So right now we're looking at. Trying to make the building structurally sound, so securing all of the walls. All four joints, you know, everything that makes sure that the building's gonna last over two or three years, um, and then hopefully being able to develop. Uh, one of the floors for commercial space, and that'll be like the first phase that we're applying for. Um, that cost, uh, was a little over two million. So we're hoping that we get the whole thing, uh, but we'll see what. The state decides.
Okay. That would, assuming you got that, that would. Sounds like it puts you pretty close to where you're.
Yeah.
You need to be to, okay.
Yeah, we're not professional developers or anything like that, so two million dollars isn't a lot of money. Um, so we're hoping that they get us as close to that as possible. Um, they have a ninety percent match, so if we do bid. You know, two point three or whatever, um, we are required to. At least cover ten percent, and the state will cover the nineteen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions in the board?
Do you need us to pass a resolution that we accept this?
Correct. I'm going to, I have the resolution here. I, I usually, uh, the, 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 um. Mo is usually to read the resolution. I'll do this quickly. Resolution to support application for the round seven Restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program. Whereas the Empire State Development Corporation is, is requesting funding proposals for the sixth round of the Restore New York Municipal Grant Program. And whereas grant funds are available for the projects to demolish and deconstruct. And or rehabilitate, reconstruct vacant, abandoned, surplus, and or condemned residential, commercial, and or mixed-use buildings. And whereas an important goal for Store New York is to revitalize urban centers, rural areas, and disadvantaged communities. It's anticipated that upon completion, the projects funded by Restore New York Grants will attract individuals, families, and industry and commercial enterprises. To the municipality. It's further anticipated that the improved community and business climate will result. In an increased tax base, thereby improving municipal finances. And wherewithal to grow, to further grow the municipality's tax and resource base, lessening its dependence on state aid. And whereas villages with populations less than forty thousand can apply for up to two million dollars in grant funding. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Village of Sackas Harbor Village Board that hereby authorizes submission of Restore New York. Grant application not to exceed two million. For the Old Stone Hospital parcel ID eight one point seven seven dash one dash one. Point one one seven located in the Madison Bears. For, be it further resolved. That the project meets the following objectives. The project number one is consistent with the Sackas Harbor Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan. Uh, number two, the proposed financing for the project is appropriate and committed, and number three, the project develops and enhances infrastructure. And or facilities in a matter that will attract, create, and sustain employment opportunities where applicable. Uh, so I would like a motion to further this.
Can I just ask one clarifying question, because you just read something.
Let me, let me take the motion first, then we'll, then we'll open it. Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Townsend, need a second? Second by trustee Mildren, discussion.
Sorry, I just had a quick question. It says, number two, the proposed financing is appropriate and committed. There is no, the village is not on the hook for not even one dollar for any of this, correct? Regardless of.
That, that is true.
Okay, I just.
Strictly the applicant, right?
Strictly the applicant.
Village is not like zero dollars.
Yep, and it, and it is in the.
Yeah, in the, in the explanation papers about Restoring, why do it this way is to guarantee that it only goes to developers where the community is behind the project.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, trustee Mildren.
Yes.
Trustee Townsend.
Yes.
Trustee Silva. Yes.
Yes. Okay, the resolution is passed. And, uh, we will. Include the resolution with the, uh, applicant, right? The application and.
Yeah.
Okay. And I believe just to go back on what the mayor said earlier, Ron, you were maybe gonna get it at the LDC perhaps to send a letter of support, if you can. Great. Okay, we have a couple of. Thank you very much. We have a couple of applications for events and, uh, uh, we'll take, uh. We'll take the quilt show for, no, you know what? We'll take the, uh, let's take, um, the poetry. Uh, Great Lakes, uh, Poetry Program. First event date of four twenty-two, four twenty-nine, and five-six at the, uh. At the visitor center, visitor center, okay with the application? Comments, questions for use of facility by the board?
I'll make a motion to accept and accept the application.
Motion made by trustee Silva, second please.
I'll second.
Uh, second by trustee Townsend, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carry. Second. The second one is the, um, the second type of quilt show, caveat, um. I tried to reach out today to. What, who I thought were some organizers of Oktoberfest. Does anybody know who's, who's, who's organizing Oktoberfest? Who is Kathy?
It's Brew New York.
It's Brew New York. You haven't heard back, okay? And did you?
Are you trying to make sure that it's?
Yeah, did you hear that it was? Well, there's two events now. Brew New York will stay Brew New York, right? That's gonna be an August event. He, so September thirty.
Application in for that yet.
No, no, that's what I'm, I'm trying to, to, now, the other thing that I've also heard is Oktoberfest is, is where. Unless somebody's mentioned it directly to you, I heard Oktoberfest was not. Um, they're not thinking of locating it downtown in the village. They're looking at locating a bigger. Was that?
That's what we're unfair about.
Yeah, yeah. So I heard early on it was that it, it wasn't necessarily. On the visitor center lawn or, or that kind of thing, but that, that was very preliminary. It was back in the early fall.
Yeah, they're still brainstorming. Last we spoke, they, they said, you know, they would like to do something where. You know, from Goodfellas down to the visitor center, Main Street's closed, so that they can, each restaurant can have like, uh, a table out front and, and participate. That's a, you know, I'm not sure that'll be a first year thing with them running it. So there, there's still, I think, the brainstorming phase of, of where and how it's gonna work.
So, so we'll take the quilt show.
I say accept.
And accept, uh, yeah.
They have their application.
I just wanted to, to give you all that, what I knew, okay? So any, any questions on this? And I'll just use of the visitor center again.
I'll make a motion to accept the quilt show for September twenty-nine.
Trustee, uh, Silva makes the motion second.
I'll second that motion. I love the quilt show.
Trustee Mildren, the biggest quilt fan in the, uh, room, seconds it. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Although I want to see his quote.
Yeah, okay, right.
He's more of a quilt user than a quote.
Quilt user, right. There you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Um, okay. Next, our E F C Engineering Planning Grant for Influent and Infiltration. So, um, and, and mayor, you probably, uh, you've already done some work on this. Can you, you want to elaborate? Mayor? No?
Sorry, I, I.
Okay, you want to, did you want to elaborate on the C F C grant? Cause I know that you had some.
Yeah, we, um, Corey, is this the one that is, uh, for the Asset Management Plan, correct?
Uh, no, this is not the Asset Management Plan.
Okay, so this is where I got, I got mixed up last month where, um, the, when we got this grant. I thought the letter was the other, and I, that's where I had said, um, we could use B C A for. Um, the Asset Management Plan Grant. It looks like that was about this. Um, and the Asset Management Plan, they are still, um, intending on having a dedicated entering from that they've yet to pick. So I'm hoping that, you know, B C A will still work with us on that, but they won't be, we won't be hand in hand with them for the Asset Management Plan Grant. Uh, that was, I'll mix up with this one.
Okay.
What's this one?
And then. Corey, you want to elaborate on the E F C grant?
Yes.
Kind of pull this.
This is the inflow and infiltration study. So all the. Um, you know, rain events that gets into sources and gets the plants or potential, you know, some pumps. Hooked up to the sanitary source. It's in no other place to put things. Um, it's a report and study where we do some field investigation to see where the source is coming in.
So we'll be able to figure out which resident is pumping their.
Yeah.
Some pumps.
Residents and, and other things as well, yes. And to see where, you know, what makes it, is a, you know, need to tighten up some annals or it needs to be a storm system. To allow people to pump into that type of thing.
That last one's key because we still owe an answer to some of the residents about the storm.
Correct.
So we could use this fund, this grant for that.
Totally need a study to figure out where the water's going.
Right.
They're coming from.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have, uh, two resolutions that are attached to this. Um, any further questions of Corey? If not, um, we will, uh, go to resolution two of twenty twenty-three, Authorization for Representative to Execute Grand Agreement. Be resolved, the mayor of Sackas Harbor is authorized to execute a grand agreement with the New York State. Environmental Facilities Corporation and any and all other contracts, documents, and instruments necessary to bring about the project. And fulfill the Village of Sackas Harbor's obligations under the grant agreement. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by trustee Silva.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Townsend. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. And resolution three of twenty twenty-three, Authorization and Appropriation of Local Match. Resolve that the Village of Sackas Harbor authorizes and appropriates a minimum of twenty percent match as required. By the, um, Engineering Planning Grant Program for the Influent Infiltration Study Project under E P G Program. This local match must be at least twenty percent of the E P G grant award of twenty thousand dollars. The source of the local match and any amount in excess of the required match shall be provided by the general fund. The maximum local match shall not exceed five thousand dollars. Based on the total estimated maximum project cost of twenty-five thousand dollars. The mayor of Sackas Harbor may increase this local match through the use of in-kind services without further approval from the Village Board of Trustees. In motion?
I'll make a motion to accept resolution three.
Motion by trustee Silva, second please.
Second.
Second by trustee Mildren, discussion.
Hey, last vote, last resolution, this regulation, are we supposed to roll calls, does that matter?
It wasn't a roll call vote, was it? It was a roll call vote.
On the resolutions, it doesn't.
Let's, let's fin, we'll finish number three and go back to number two, okay? Roll call for resolution three.
Yes.
Trustee Townsend.
Yes.
Trustee Silva. Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. Um. Uh, want to re, re-entertain, uh, resolution two. Um. Let's do roll call and resolution two.
That was motioned by. Townsend, um, so, um, trustee Mildren.
Yes.
Trustee Townsend.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, um, we're, we're tabling. Uh, cable tax agreement, um. At this point, we don't have a lot of information. I think that, um. We're just going to, uh, we'll wait for more information. I think there's some action we need to take with it, with the contract for the cable company, so. We'll just move on with that. Okay, uh, new law, uh, allowing EMS firefighter property tax exemption. Um, there is a new law, uh, which authorizes volunteer firefighter and ambulance worker property tax exemption, uh, signed into law last month. And essentially it, um, uh, volunteer ambulance and firefighters. Who served a minimum of two years, uh, can take advantage of this. Uh, I'm not gonna go through the details, but essentially it's. They would, uh, have an exemption or be entitled to an exemption of up to ten percent of the assessed value. Of their primary residents of volunteer, uh, of the volunteer fire, firefighters and ambulance workers. Um, so if the local government opts in. An application for the exemption by the firefighter ambulance worker must be filed with the local assessor. Before the applicable tax status date.
It needs to be done every year.
Every year, and it's been every year. Now, if the village opts out, but the town does not, so in the town supervisors here as well. Um, the exemption applies to only, only to the tax levy of the unit of local government. So we're only talking about. The village taxes. If the town opts in, they would, the, the volunteer firefighter or ambulance worker would be. Uh, allowed that exemption as well. Now, we have also since learned that, um. And Peggy can elaborate on this because she is a, she does tax preparation, and you, you may be able to as well. There already is an exemption in place.
But that's on their income taxes.
But it's under income tax, right?
The clarification is this, there's two things. And so from. For a firefighter or an ambulance firefighter or ambulance, whatever, ambulance or volunteer firefighter, in order for them to qualify for this. They need to not only be a firefighter or an E M T for two years, they need to be active. So that's.
An active, thank you. That's important.
Member, and being an active member to the fire department requires that they attend training, that they attend calls. So not only are they on the roster, they're actually showing up and doing things. So that's an incentive to get them to do their part. So that's the one thing. The other thing is, I, apparently there is already a. Two hundred and fifty dollar rebate or tax exemption that a volunteer can already claim. On their personal income taxes. So the way it's written on this. Is that if they receive the two hundred and fifty dollar income tax exemption, they can't do both. They can do one or the other. Personally, from the village standpoint, I look at it to say, I don't want to make that choice for them. I want to put whatever in place that I can to help incentivize them to keep doing what they're doing. And to show them appreciation and let them decide if they want to do the income tax or the. Property tax. To me, that's their choice to make. Um, and I know I've talked to Shannon, and we've talked about. Ultimately, what would it cost us to do that? Um. There's forty-five members of the fire department, as we discussed. Not all forty-five of them live in the village. Not all forty-five of them are active. Not all forty-five of them are property owners. So when you look at that kind of number, um, we're talking maybe. Seven, seven in the village, honestly. Right, so you're talking, it, it, it's only for the village standpoint, they're only gonna save like fifty dollars. Times seven, it's really not that much money. So I think I would like to see us move forward and put it in place and let them decide if they want to do it. And then hopefully the town could also do something similar, and then we could really incentivize them, um, to be able to do that same. Incentive. But the key is working with their secretary to make sure that annually they give us. A list of whoever is an active member. Because they can only, they are only eligible if they're an active member. So they, and they need to apply for the, they need to apply annually. So they have to fill out a form. So they have to fill out a form. That would be with Jim Rowland. Right, it would go to him. So that he would be able to do it. Yes, yes, so that would be nice.
Trustee, uh, any other discussion, thoughts on this?
No, I I agree with Kelly. I think, I think we should. Give them that opportunity and let them, let them decide.
So I think from us, we need to do a resolution.
It's 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 just like we did, we gotta pass an order. So.
Right, so we'll have to take that next.
We'll get it right, yeah, we'll get it written up and uh and we'll bring it before the board in February.
Okay.
Hey, uh, guys, uh, let me ask you a quick question, because I I couldn't tell from my first read of it. Do you know if this is something that the county can do for the county taxes? Because, you know, like Kelly said, we're looking at. You know, uh, it's about thirty dollars, twenty-seven, well, twenty-seven dollars per hundred thousand dollars a house you have. In savings here, but it's about ten times that if the county were to do the same thing.
It only, it specifically says local government, village and town.
Okay.
And there doesn't say county, you're right, I.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if the county could also take action at their level to do it, and and whether or not. You know, we could encourage that or not, but but I I wasn't sure.
County, county together, so you can see that.
Here.
From that bill.
You will, based on the fact that this came out by N I COM uh one week ago or less. Every single village in town is gonna be discussing this right now, so we're not lone wolves out there, so.
Uh, I also just wanna make a point uh to when we and if and when we um approve this, um, what I really thought. Was something to really look at. After a firefighter or an ambulance worker has twenty years of service, they're grandfathered in, and they get that ten percent for the rest of their life. Which I think is a really nice payback to somebody that's given twenty years of service to our community. They're providing free to us. A service to help protect us. Um, and then should that firefighter uh pass on. That deduction goes to their spouse, so they're allowed to keep that as well, so I just. I think it would help us to help our residents. I just wanna put that out there too, that I really think it's been important that we go for.
Okay. Great, I have something in February. Public comment.
Yes, I'm just gonna give you this. Yeah, I will give it to you. Yep.
Anybody on Zoom, public comment? Anybody in the audience here? Okay, hearing none, uh, closed public comment section. And uh, so uh, folks, we're going to um. I'm gonna ask for a motion going to executive session to deal with a legal matter. When we come back, we will do no business. We'll adjourn the meeting, so. Um, that is where we stand.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Trustee Sova, seconded by trustee Townsend. Okay. We're gonna hang.
Can we vote on it?
Oh, perfect, yes, thank you.
But you had that high.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Oppose that, we're, motion carry, we're in executive session.
Right.
How guys, good night.
Good night.
Night, Alex.
Take care, be safe.